This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
Good evening. And welcome to the June 12, 2019, meeting of the North Haven Board of Education. I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:30 PM, give or take a few minutes. Number one on our agenda is our consent agenda, the May 9, 2019 minutes. In addition, we have the retirements of Michael Proto, Christine Blubelt. And let me go back and tell you where each person is. Michael Proto, the special ed teacher at North Haven High School. Christine Blubelt, I hope I'm saying her last name correctly. Blubelt is an intervention teacher at the high school. Marcia Brown, physical ed and healthcare teacher at Matowice. Adrienne McDonald, which comes as a surprise to me, as not a surprise because she was one of my son's teachers, so I wish her the best. Then, we have the resignation of our director of student services, Dana Corvo. And we have three teachers who will be off on maternity leave. Kristin Messina, Macy Critson. Christine is a grade one teacher at Green Acres. Macy is a special ed teacher at the middle school. And Krista Kaplan, our grade eight social studies teacher at the middle school. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So what?
Second. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say that actually I taught with Chris Blubelt and Marcia Brown at the middle school. And having Chris and Mike Proto leave is a big blow to special ed because they have very good relationships with their students. And they've worked a lot with students that need that extra encouragement. And Adrienne, I never, actually my only contact with her was reading Across America. I was in her classroom, but I've known her through the years. And I wish her all the best, again, a strong teacher. And I really like being in her classroom. So I wish them all the best.
We both do. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We'll start with the Board of Education's student rep report. We're going to start with the auditorium.
So, basically, there's not much going on because you know, the end of the year. But our class just had our last, you know, closing class officer meeting. So we're trying to plan a couple of fundraisers over the summer and things like that. Autogon members are, and many are preparing for graduation. Most of us are in the middle of exams. I'm done with my exams. Poo. Everyone's had their closing meetings, council included, and we're all just really getting ready for summer.
Great, great. Tim, before you start, we have the board. I just want to thank you so much for all you did for us, coming to our meetings and speaking to us. And we have a little something for you for your next step. So I want to say thank you. And we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. But that doesn't mean you don't have one last report.
Okay, so my last report. So we had grad rehearsals today, and we also have a smart morning as well. And we did graduation stuff for four o'clock tomorrow indoors.
Yes, definitely decided indoors, I think so too.
The weather can change. But yeah, it's fun. Thank you guys for this great opportunity this year. It's really enriching to meet this year and also last year with Rachel. It's really fun, thank you.
Thank you. I ran into Rachel a few weeks ago at Moonrise. I think she's working there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I ran into her. It was nice to see her here. Tim, we wish you the best of luck when you start school and come back and visit us.
Or spell on the spelling bee team. Always an opening there, always.
Well, we welcome to that. So for myself, I will be at graduation tomorrow night, of course, at four o'clock. I just want to say to the class of 2019, we wish you the best on behalf of the Board of Education. You've been a spectacular class in many ways. Going to say this for 2022. I had the privilege of working with a lot of kids when they're rushing to make up their community service hours in February, March, and April through the Rotary. And I just want to say, we have some of the best kids that I've ever really interacted with. So I want to wish them well for that. I also wanted to bring up a July meeting. Did we discuss not having one?
We did.
Or not having one?
We cannot have one, yes. And part of my...
You'll bring that up.
I will bring it up because there is something else, another component to it that I thought to talk to the board about.
Okay, I knew there was something on there. Again, and this is our, I want to just say to the board, and if we don't have our July meeting, wish you well also and have a good summer. And I wish everyone else a good summer too. So I'll move on. On finished business? Okay, new business. We need the reports of the standing committees.
Aces had our meeting last week. And there's actually four things. One, the last meeting, they traditionally acknowledge retired teachers. They come and are presented to the governing body and they stay for lunch. That's always nice. And at Aces, it's very common for somebody to have 35, 37, 42, 45 years of service because they're also talking about Aces Access, which is the transition, I mean, the 21-plus. And they have being drivers, just they're so devoted. It's just wonderful to see. Leader Hill will be ready for the opening of school in September, which will be after Labor Day. And they're planning a ribbon cutting on September 12th. And it'll probably be after their school lets out because they didn't go into detail. But this is like three levels of security in the building. So, yeah. And then Wintergreen Magnet School will be in the old Gateway School, which was the old Orchard Hill School. And that will be starting in September.
How do you know that?
Yeah.
How many students go to it? Will go to the Wintergreen, Bassett Road, Orchard Hill School?
Well, it's interesting because I was wondering that because it's predominantly Hammond School kids.
Right.
And I was wondering if that was going to affect their population at all, especially with the younger population, you know, the K-1. If parents wanted to have them on the bus for that, that's a decent bus ride. I think they have some kids coming from Waterbury, a few kids, because it's a magnet school.
So I guess for me, I'm just wondering what the... How many kids go to the Magnet School? It's a great, the Wintergreen Magnet School is a wonderful school. Funny, my friend from Hammond, their kids went to it. I'm concerned about the bus situation and traffic.
Yeah, well, yeah.
That's why I was just wondering how many kids are in there. Probably something we should take. They use a different bus service than we do. But we should, do they use first student maybe?
I'm not sure. I think it's your Aces, correct?
Yes.
So we should double check that.
Yeah, and it's a K-8 school.
Yeah, I just think it's a good idea. The K-8 school is a good idea for us to let them know. And then off topic. You know, no, I'll just go on there. Yeah, I think we need to have an idea for the buses and the traffic there. That is a high traffic area.
And then the last thing was, I believe the superintendents have been surveyed about the needs, if there is a need and what the need is for training of paris, paraprofessionals, lunch ladies, bus monitors. The governing body, all of us were saying, yes, there is a need.
There is.
And they're talking about, you know, maybe, you know, a day or two of training where they would, somebody would go, you know, the staff would go to Aces. But they're more thinking that a lot of schools have early dismissal days where the teacher's doing the training and that they would send somebody out to one building in the district and do the training there. So we all, we all supported that.
That's a great idea.
Thank you. Curriculum instruction and planning?
So we didn't meet this month.
Did you report on last month?
I did.
Yes, I did.
We do have one action item, the approval of the North Haven High School cheerleading field trip to Warwick, Rhode Island. The committee didn't review it because it came in after our previous meeting. If we don't approve it tonight, that means that they can't go. However, I, and I'm not suggesting one way or the other, but I think we all should take a look at it because it's in your packet and a lot of the information was left out of the application. So I don't want to say one way or the other, what we should do, but I'd like to see these filled out completely.
I agree with you. And I know, Melinda, you've talked to others that when they request something...
And this was a little different because it comes out of athletics.
Right.
So it's not really going through.
But I do know that I believe this is a field trip that they do every year.
Correct.
I don't know if the competition or camp, is it competition or a camp?
I don't think it's a camp.
The camp that they do every year. Again, our only question would be, and I don't have my notes in front of me, what was the transportation? I know we had that issue several years ago.
We've outlined, you know, what the expectations are about that from that issue that we had a few years ago. So we remind Steve Cleveland all about it, to remind the coach if we decide to do it. And we can have some conversation with him about the forms for athletic field trips and what they should entail.
I think so. Perhaps he can come to one of the CNI meetings and we can show them what they should, what they should, him, how it should look. And I know the principals talk to their teachers, et cetera.
And this one seems to be a problem because we get it so late all the time because it's in August and we don't have a July meeting. So this isn't the first time we've had to have this conversation outside of the regular cycle. So maybe, you know, having him in and then if there's going to be any overnight or out of state trips through athletics, we can have a process for how to handle that.
Right.
Because it really is a little bit different than our other type of field trips in terms of the protocols that we use.
Yeah, and I think that some of these don't really apply the instruction objectives and things like that. But maybe if they could just even upload a brochure.
I was just going to say, the schedule of what occurs and what the days would look like. Like that would probably be helpful.
And I think, you know, we'll vote on this for sure. But those are the comments. And I would like to have one of the cheerleaders or captain or someone come to us and speak to us and tell us what they've done and what they accomplished at that, at that camp if they're going forward. It's nice to hear what they're doing.
Is there a way that they can provisionally approve it?
Yeah, we can approve it.
And just say like...
Contingent upon?
It's approved contingent on, like, the...
For their completion, whatever it might be.
And we can also, at that point, we can give Patrick and Melinda the, I've got to figure out the right way to say it, the authority to approve that trip. We can do that. So we can have a motion to approve the North Haven High School cheerleading field trip to Warwick on August 19 through August 22, contingent upon proper filling out of the application form and approval, final approval by Patrick.
Can I add?
And a reminder about the protocols of transportation and supervision.
Chaperones are on the bus.
Exactly, exactly.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion on that? Perhaps what we can do is after you speak with them and they redo that, we can just have it in our file, send it to us. We have it in our files so that we know that they understand the protocol. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, motion passes. I hope you got the wording on here. Could my melee little shorthand? Okay, next would be finance and operations?
Finance and operations met earlier this evening. As we're coming down to the end of the year, we're closely monitoring the final numbers. We should be fine. Our deficit balances should be offset by the excess cost grants. Pam has continually been meeting with the town ongoing every month just to make sure with her transition being month number three now, that we're both on the same page here with the board event and also the town. Insurance numbers for May claims are not in as of yet. They'll be in next week. So we'll have to present that at the next board meeting. So we'll discuss.
Golden Middle School?
Middle School committee met on Monday. I wasn't able to make the meeting, but it was a pretty short meeting. Most of the discussion was approval of invoices and then an update on all the minor projects. The main thing is the gym replacement floor, which starts after the school session is, the school year is, is over. And next meeting is on the 24th, and it's at 8:15.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask a...
Sure.
Sorry. Are we still tracking where we were as of the last update? When we have like all, I think it was like $250,000, $300,000 left in the project. But I know, I know we're paying invoices, but we're still basically in the same place as we were before?
Yeah, if I remember correctly, there was, after the gym floor project goes through, we don't have that much left. I don't remember the exact amount. It wasn't by last report for last month as to exactly how much the balance is. But I'm not exactly sure. Because once that's done with, the next step is to kind of look at the other items to see what can, what is priority and what, you know, can't be afforded.
The bid, like the bid alternates, right?
Exactly.
And if memory serves, there were like bleachers?
There were bleachers, scoreboard, there was a couple of other things. But even outside the field, there was other things, other wish listings.
Something for the stage, I think, right? For the theater?
The one that stands out is just the bleachers and the scoreboards and I think some lighting and everything.
And do you know, I forget what attorney Denofeu referred to it as, but any contested items with the project management team?
Yeah.
Do we know, like, an approximate timeline on when those contested items might be settled?
Yeah, I would, I can ask Gary Johns. There's some movement on that aspect, but I don't know if Gary Johns wants to talk about it.
I know, but it's sensitive.
We can also, we can also ask Mr. Johns to come to a board meeting, perhaps our September board meeting.
To update on...
Give us an update. Okay, so let's make a note to do, to do that. We'll have him come in.
Yeah, I can invite him.
Our September to give us an update. By then, we'll know what's going on with the gym floor. They should have an idea of monies.
Yeah, I mean, they know what the money looks like. And I think I provided an update at the last, at my last report. Yeah, so they know what the, the owner's rep is tracking the, this that he provides updates all the time.
I think we'll just do a September...
Yeah, 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 we can have him come in and...
Come in and talk to us.
And talk about, yeah. And also talk about what the plans will be about the bid alternate.
Right.
Though nothing has been, has been discussed.
Right, perhaps.
Yeah, I don't know how much, I don't think there's going to be much left after the gym floors, so.
Okay, anything else? Okay. Joe, North Haven Education Foundation?
The, there was a meeting this morning. Unfortunately, I couldn't make the meeting. I know I had told the board I would kind of get back and provide the information as to how the spelling bee went. And they raised, the foundation raised, excuse me, the foundation raised a little over $23,000 for the spelling bee. So it was, and it got a fair amount of press coverage.
It did.
So it wound up being a very good and productive. As a main fundraising event for the foundation, it did a very good job.
I don't know, Joe, if you're, if you're involved in this part, but I just got a, not me, my children. My boys are both graduates of North Haven High School. Just received a postcard from Bernie asking to call or give some information.
A big financial, whether you're alumni.
They're updating their alumni.
Okay, is that what that is?
Yes.
Okay. Is that to like give their addresses and things like that or?
Yeah, just to stay current and I think eventually get a...
Participate directly.
Yeah, exactly. For donation. Yeah. Okay, no, I was just wondering, because I just saw, and I was in a...
Pre-FaceBook.
Yeah, pre-FaceBook. All right, great, thank you. Policy?
Okay. So policy met tonight, and we got to the weeds a little bit today. We hit a couple of policies. The shipment policies, the amount of policies they provided us are vetted by lawyers. And so there's, they're substantial. So we, we went through a couple of them and tried to look at some of the wording to make sure they fit our needs as a district. And so we made some good progress today. Next policy meeting, we'll be tackling it, hopefully, a bunch more.
Has that been scheduled?
It has not.
Maybe we can do policy in lieu of our board meeting in July.
Shh.
I didn't say it.
Okay. PTA Council, maybe?
I was not able to attend the last PTA council meeting, but they did get a presentation from the Boys and Girls Club about the potential for the location at Hope Christian Church. And I heard that it went through.
Just to give you an update, not Board of Ed related, but I did a 10 last night, the neighborhood meeting that they were having at Hope Christian Church with the neighborhoods and the Hope Girls Boys and Girls Club to talk about the location because it was presented to the planning and zoning committee and they asked them to talk to the neighbors because some of the neighbors are concerned about traffic and also privacy for their own yard.
Is that the Hope Christian Church is on Mon's?
Yeah.
There's already a ton of traffic.
Yeah, that's their problem. Their, you know, their concern is...
I don't think you would notice it anymore.
So much traffic there.
Yeah.
But I believe that a lot of the questions were answered last night. They feel pretty comfortable with it. And I have to tell you, I was, it's in my car. I'll bring it up to you all. Next time, I'll make a copy of scanics in your copy. They gave me a list of the things that they do. It's just amazing what they do, do for the great kids. And we, as the Board of Ed, are going to be talking to our bus company to see what we can do to get kids from different schools bussed to Hope Christian School, Hope Christian Church. And it was my first time there and I was really, really impressed with the layout and how it was done. There will also be, if anyone's interested, on Saturday morning at nine, nine o'clock at Hope Christian, they'll also continue another presentation, if anyone wants to come to that. Okay, thank you, Amanda. May I have a motion to approve the standing committee reports?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Mr. Sturk, may we have your report?
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to start off with some exciting news. We have a gentleman with us tonight. Mr. Patrick Lawrence is our new high school assistant principal. He signed officially today. He was appointed last Thursday by our board. So we're very excited. Thank you, Patrick, for joining us this evening. He's currently the lead teacher at Wilbur Cross for the art department. And we've come to find him as a very kind and engaging student-centered leader. So we're very excited for him to be here. So thank you for coming to talk, Patrick.
And if we have, for the board members, we have a executive session tonight. We can take five minutes for those that didn't get a chance to meet Patrick, Patrick, Patrick. If they want to say hi and just introduce themselves within that, like, we'll do a five-minute, like, break before we go into the executive session. If you don't mind waiting until the end of it. Thank you, go ahead.
We've also named an interim director of student services for the 1920-19, 2020 school year. Jen Stewart, who is currently our grade six through 12 special ed coordinator, will serve in that role beginning July 1st. However, she has already begun, begun abclimating herself in meeting with Dana and actually met with Melinda and I quite often this past week. So we're excited for that. Some good news, good news. We have... All good news. We have to open potentially another kindergarten class at Matowice, which is good news. High enrollment and always, you know, job security, so. This past week, I've also met with Alan Sturts from the North Haven Lions Club. And we signed the memorandum of understanding, which was in your packets for the vision screen. I think it's the fourth straight year we've done that. We are, elementary and middle school are being screened. And Alan and I had spoken about potentially moving to the high school and getting the students tested before they hit their driver's test. So. But Alan, Alan's very, very interested in getting more involved in the district. He's a very, very engaged man. So we'll be meeting more often as, as the year goes on. In your board packet, there was also a breakdown of students' student levels at the high school. I'm going to continue to do more work around this. I know there were preliminary numbers, but I, I call IT Gen, IT Gen, Gen K, and I are going to jump in a little bit more and look at the breakdown for students in the, in the high school for L1, Level 2, and Level 3 courses, just to give you a better idea. And so this is other news about the July meeting. So it will be potentially necessary for us to hold a special meeting in the next couple of weeks for two reasons. We have a new computer lease that we need the board to approve. And the reason we couldn't do it tonight is the lease is still being vetted by our attorney. And we just received the lease recently. So we couldn't get on the agenda for tonight. And also, the Connecticut National Identity Service audit report, say that twice, is requiring us to adopt a new revised fingerprinting policy. And that needs to be done rather quickly as well. So we might need to get together and get those taken care of. And as the year ends, I just want to thank you all for all your support over the last few months. It's been a great transition, and so thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. We can maybe look at the July... I know I couldn't make it July 11th, I know that already. I don't know. We can maybe look at the following week or something.
Even, it might even be done. Need to be done for 4 July.
Okay, so you just let us...
Okay.
Okay.
I'll keep you.
As long as we have a quorum. I know vacation and holidays start. Assistant superintendent report, Melinda?
I just had one thing that I wanted to share with the board. Earlier this year in late fall, we had Jill Metz come to CNI to talk about a textbook that she needed to get for AP government class. And College Board kind of dictates, you know, the, the materials that you use. So we had selected a resource at the time. And when she put, went to go put in the order, they're no longer available. So the committee came back together and had a new recommendation. And that is a textbook called American Politics Today. Again, it's in the same venue recommended by College Board. We just need to buy a class set of 30, and the cost actually comes in a little less than the other textbook was. But I didn't want to just do that without having, at least, you know, sharing that here because if there is a change to what we had talked about originally, if everybody's okay with that.
Okay, great.
And CNI won't meet in July, but we'll probably have some things to discuss in August. So I'll just touch base with you. Maybe we'll do it mid-August, depending if we've got, you know, field trips or textbooks or something to discuss for approval. Thank you.
Pam, Director of Finance and Operations?
Just a couple of quick things to share. I am working on that annual bid and contract list that was requested by the board. And I will begin to provide that to you on an annual basis. You'll probably see it by September. We're trying to catch up with what we have and what we are in negotiations with. We've opened a few bids over the last couple of weeks. And Jen K and I are opening up the AV equipment bid tomorrow afternoon. Also, we have opened the financial system for the schools and departments to start entering their 1920 purchase requests since they need to make certain they get everything in time for the opening of school. Also, the last thing I wanted to mention was that I am also planning to provide you with our new, in accordance with our new process, the list of the transfer funds as we complete the year end. So you will probably see that in your August or September meeting as well. And it's really just house cleaning transfers at this point. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Pam. And I know come August, the start of school will be like a whole fresh start for you after coming.
I think both you and Patrick are just completing like your birth and ID days. You both worked very, quite a bit.
Any public comment tonight?
You missed item number seven.
I did.
Sorry.
Wait a minute, Wes.
She took a pause.
Teresa's never baked you anything again. Dead to her.
Public comments? Does anyone have any public comments or something? Talk about Wes's wit, anything?
If I was twice as smart, I'd be a hole in a crack.
Future agenda items? I, one of the things I do want to just put on the agenda items is perhaps as a board,
we can look again at the field trip, uh, form and maybe see how we can also adapt it for athletics versus...
That could be good work out of policy because it's part of the policy, that form. So we couldn't change it in isolation, but that would be the place to make the change. So when you get to those policies, that would, it's actually a perfect idea.
Nina? Uh, because we had mentioned about, um, inviting the, the director of the, um, Boys and Girls Club to come speak to the board sometime.
Yep, I will, we will do that. Yep, we will do that. I'm trying to think one, maybe August, September. Or maybe during our special meeting that we have in July. Okay, all right, that's also a future agenda. Okay. May I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss matters pertaining to personnel? Second? Any discussion? Outside of, let's just take a five-minute break and, um, then we'll go into...
I think Wes holds the, for sure.
I think she beat me once.
Oh, she beat me once.
She beat me once, yeah.
May I have a motion to adjourn the Wednesday, June twelfth meeting at seven fifty-five? So, second? Randy's second? Randy made the motion, Jen's second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Good night, everyone. We'll see you in a few weeks.
Good summer?
Good morning tomorrow.